... o'clock.
Yay.
It is the June 6th meeting of the Tufton Borough Planning Board. Before we get going, does anybody have any general planning board questions? Steve? Okay. For four minutes, anybody see anything that needed adjustment?
I saw one here. I was not present at that meeting. May 16th.
Okay.
So, I can't speak to anything else in a minute, but I know that I wasn't there.
You were not there.
Right.
Tom was your name?
Yep.
Tom. I had a question.
Thanks for covering for me, Don.
Sorry. Copy and paste.
No, no problem.
Question on page seven. Stated here that Chip Alvey stated the planning board approved the subdivision. Was that a subdivision that was approved?
Yeah.
It was or wasn't a boundary line adjustment or?
No, he had a conditional approval on the subdivision.
Okay.
A long time.
A long time. The one part of that was a boundary line adjustment.
That subdivision was never completed. We have to find out.
That was one that the town Wolfboro had the boundary line adjustment. Oh, we're talking about something else.
This was Chip's.
This is up behind Frank.
Up behind Rockland or other?
Yeah, just east of you. Yep.
Anybody have anything else? I have a motion to accept in minutes with the exception of Bill was not here.
I got it.
All those in favor? All right, we have one scheduled appointment for today. That was the Michael and Lisa Carlton Trust. This was the same pick that we started. That was continued waiting for the AOT. They asked for a continuance from this meeting. I would imagine the AOT did not come in. That is why they're asking for the continuance. I have a motion to approve the...
No, continue it to June 20th.
Okay.
That's what they requested.
I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to continue the Michael and Lisa Carlton Trust application for Tax map 32-2-5 till June 20th?
So will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is Planning Board Counsel, and Gary's going to bring us through that. Gary met with DTC. There's also the only one who brought questions for us back, which is very interesting.
Last page. I found my print, sorry.
It's all right.
She goes out.
Is that like a cricket?
A bird or something.
Just for a refresher to everybody, we have two firms, which is DTC and Upton.
Have you got more on here?
That's her.
Upton and Haffield.
Here. This is for you. This is what we did with these guys. This is a cover letter.
Okay.
Under here were the questions we, I asked, I posed to them. And these are the answers to those two people, the first two.
Okay.
Andrew Mical and Upton Haffield. So tonight is...
DTC.
DTC, okay?
Yep.
So, DTC, I posed the same questions to. They came back with this letter that I just gave you in response to the questions. They did it a little different for me. They really directed it exactly at the questions, okay? And went through it. So, little bit about them. Seventeen attorneys. Probably 70% of the firm is involved in land planning, okay? Municipalities, then they do other things. So, there's two other attorneys, total of 19, which are actually retired and sit on their board right now. The people that I've met with were two people, okay, here. And they are Justin Passay. Justin's a partner of the firm, made a partner in January, okay? And Sharon Somers, she's a partner in the firm. She's been with the firm for 21 years. Both highly experienced people. Justin's been here for seven years. Prior to that, he's a JAG attorney in the Navy. So he's been around long, quite a long time. What I, one thing that I recognized right away meeting with them is, what I do is, I send the questions to them. I don't ask for them to come back until I meet with them. And I've done that with everybody. And I typically take the questions and I kind of set them aside, and I go into other things, okay? So I can get as much as possible out of them, and I'm standing there. Because apparent from these people versus the others that they were all over our website. They were all over the planning group. They've looked at us, they've looked at a lot of the meetings and minutes, okay? So, one of their comments that came back was the 20% on Lakes Region planning that we want to do as far as money goes to them defined. They found it kind of interesting. Not so much that we did it. I think they liked the idea that we actually did it, but they were kind of shocked that Lakes Region planning has really dropped the ball. And they were kind of concerned about that, so. But as you go through these questions, you can look, you know, their fees are the most competitive of all the three people that we've talked to. They're down to, with the partners, they're at $190, okay? Associates, 160, paralegals at 100. And they've always used a paralegal too, if they thought it was, you know, something that was okay to do, type of questions you'd ask them. So, so most competitive. And we were dealing with these two people, pardon, the two partners in this, okay? Additional costs for typical postage, traveling, same type of thing. One thing that they do offer, okay, that the others didn't offer, they offer classes to their clients once a year, free of charge. So they would come here, sit with us, and discuss whatever we really want to discuss. So first of all, update us on loss, all right? And then they'll go into any other discussions that we want to deal with. Whether that be woodworks, any subject matter that might be a subdivision, whatever we want to know about, so. And they would do that every year, okay? Which was kind of nice. One of the other interesting things I found versus the other people is I asked the question, question 10 was, what, if any, questions do we have for us? These are the only guys that came back with questions. The other people just kind of, they kind of blew over that a little bit. So they really want to know what our priorities are for legal services. Does the planning board have a list of hot topics or recurring issues that DTC would be wise to get smart upfront with, okay? And what advice does the planning board have for DTC should we be hired, okay? Good, good questions. We had about an hour conversation. I was pretty impressed with these guys. Their group, these are two people in their group, all right, that I met with. But there's another six additional lawyers that make up their group for planning board type stuff, okay? And again, Sharon heads up another group. She's a secondary backup to this group, but it was Justin handles this group, all right? Which would do planning board type stuff. So in her group, she has an additional other people. But a lot of these people, you know, piggyback each other because 70% of the firm concentrates on what we're looking for, land use type stuff. And they're based in Meredith, they're based in Portsmouth, and they're based in Exeter also. Justin is a New Hampshire native, all right? Went away for a while, obviously went into service. He's still in the service today. I think he's such a good one as the Colonel.
He serves.
Yeah, he's in the reserves now. Who would be, who would be working in Meredith? He works out of Portsmouth. Sharon works out of Portsmouth both.
So we don't use in the Portsmouth work?
I went to Portsmouth. And he said, hey, I'll be happy to come up to Meredith. Says, you know what? For 15 more minutes of driving, I'll come right to you. I don't need you to hit the road for...
95% of the time, they could be all hired.
They? Let me just find a woman. She go. They had... One of the things that they do also, which I found interesting, that they offer, if you, we're having our meeting at 7:00. And you have some technical questions that you don't understand and you need clarification, they're willing to talk to you at 6:30. You can call them up at 6:30 prior to our meeting, take a review, and they'll give you advice on it. And the thing I like about that is they can give you a lot in 10, 15 minutes versus sitting, sending you an email, doing those type of things. So they get through a lot of things for you. Break it down in common sense, all right? I went through them, the same type of questions I do with the other people. We would probably use, you know, an attorney more often if we could get a quick paragraph answer, two paragraphs, all right? Common sense, what's this RSA really say? And they like that too. They say, yeah, we know what you need, you know, rather than going, we don't want to go to an attorney and have a six-page letter come back to us. That's even bigger than the RSA.
The other thing is, there's the RSA, and then there's the case law, okay? So we can read the RSA. But unless you're conversant in what's been going on in the courts that interprets that RSA, you don't know where things stand today. And so that's...
That's what's nice.
That's why it's important to be able to engage with counsel that is on top of this.
Well, I mean, these guys.
As I mentioned before, we have a relationship with DTC, different.
Yes, I know.
Okay?
Anything about word of mouth when I walked in?
Yeah, on utility stuff. And I have never been anything but impressed with the approach that they take. We don't always hear what we'd like to hear from them, but what we hear is always a straight shot. And it's presented in a way that's not smacking you across the face, but kind of laying the whole thing out, saying, here's where I think, here's where I'd like to go, here's where I think we're going to end up. And yada, yada, yada. It's just, as I say, I don't know these individuals.
Well, that's the beauty of the classes of once a year too, because they can read up to speed. But the beauty also, if Matt wanted to speak to them prior to the meeting, you know, they're really up to date on it. So, they also do retain a type rates too, if you want to do retaining, you know, for a yearly rate, all right? They normally wait a year or two to see how much time you spend with them, but they're not, they'd be willing to do that. And then you have compliance and everything, all right? And I didn't get in the race on that, so on and so forth.
I mean, it seems to me, nothing against Upton, because they seem very good as well, but DTC was the most thorough, the cheapest.
Yeah.
They allow paralegal to do the work. We have an existing relationship with them, and they run classes free of charge.
Yeah, they were, and I like Upton Haffield, but the fact is that you're dealing with a junior guy there that's assigned to us, a five-year. Even though the partner of the firm heads up that particular group, there's like six...
Upton Haffield is big.
They're 29 attorneys, but they're, they have like six attorneys that do land use. Here you have about 14 or 12 that do it, okay?
That's what these guys do with land.
That's, yeah, that's what they really, they energy this more. But I was impressed about how they did the homework. The other people didn't do as much homework at all. But they have a lot of firepower with it, Upton Haffield. But these guys, you put them together, they have just as much firepower, really, you know, if you need it, so. And they're very professional, very pleasant to deal with, and very well-prepared. And so, you know, like I said, I did like the other group, but when I went to these guys, I said, you've got to go talk to them.
I like personally.
I like that this is what they do.
Yeah.
I like it. Sounds good to me.
There's no, there's no conflicts with them. I mean, there's no, they don't do any, they've done a little bit of philosophy, but they're not really signed up with them, done some things. But there's no other town that they represent that we, which I think is important.
Anybody have anything to add? I think we should open. I have a motion that we enlist DTC as our new planning board council.
What's that? Effective? Okay?
Effective as soon as we can get things rolling.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, we were invited to an RIV site walk with the town Wolfboro on their rapid infiltration basin. I told me you went. What'd you see? What was it about?
They showed us how the operation works, what they're going to do, and what's happened in the past, which is a concern. They had several, I want to call it blowouts, I think Dave used a different terminology, right?
Breakouts.
Breakouts, breakouts, which is supposedly monitored by the DES, and they're the ones who discovered it. But there were several breakouts. I mean, probably half a dozen in the last several years, which concerns me. And they went over to a piece of land that they did a boundary line adjustment with us. And I think, I didn't get it really, they didn't really say if there was going to be, how they were going to use it. I didn't hear that part, because I had it shown and I had a legal awareness, so.
They have, they're doing the design work on what they need to do to remediate it. But basically what happened is, this thing was designed with bowls set up on top of a big hill that was supposed to be a big pile of sand, okay? So you pour all this water in the bowls, filters down through the sand, goes all the way down to...
Just the water table.
To the water table, and then sort of works its way into the surface water, back through the way stuff normally does. Well, there wasn't a big pile of sand. That at some level in there, there was impervious material, whether it's clay or ledge or whatever. So as soon as they started pumping water in, it's breaking out through the side of the hill. The problem with that is that the discharge permit is for groundwater, not for surface water, okay? So DES granted them a permit for groundwater discharge. As soon as it breaks out of the ground, it's surface water. They don't have a permit for it. So they have been working to find effective ways to recapture this stuff. And they did some pilots that sort of worked out all right. It's basically kind of like putting a French drain in along uphill from where the breakout is to try and keep lowering the water table and running it out into a collection and distribution system that then moves it back out down at a lower level below where the breakout is. And the design that they're working on now has a whole series of these along the hill. And part of that will extend into the area that's in Tufton Borough. Their intent is that all of what's collected in that section goes back over into the collection system that they're, that they're running right now. That then will have, let's see, there are four or six channels, if you will, underground channels that brings it into the program.
Concern that I have.
So I'm going to come in underwater and then kind of work its way up.
Concern that I have, first of all, Dave did say he was going to come before the planning board. And by the way, this is probably about two years out they're talking about, I think, the way he said. But he was voluntarily going to come before the planning board. So Bill and I discussed that whatever we decide here at the planning board, when they come before us, may not hold water with them. Speaking, they may not have to abide by our decision.
I'm sure they're going to, I mean, I don't know what they're going to do, no one does, but I'm going to assume they're going to attempt to claim exemption under...
Well, this is...
74 board's law.
So based upon case law, there's some ambiguity as to where a municipality has to comply with another municipality's regulations. And so, they're going to come, their intent is to come to us and be engaged in our process, but reserve the right to do what they want. So you have, you have a difference of opinion as to what's right in the law. Unless between our council and their council, we can come to an agreement, ultimately, the only way it gets settled is in court, all right? Which doesn't help anyone. So they want to fix this thing, and they want to do it in a way that allows them to get a new permit from DES and satisfy everybody. So my sense is that there's a recognition that to stand up and say, you know, we're us, and we're going to do what we want, and we don't care about you guys, they recognize is not going to play well.
Well, I would, I would agree. The goal is to come up with a system that works, that, you know, if, nothing's served by all of us going to court and fighting over this and that and everything. We'll get far, you know, this will be a better system if we, then we...
Well, there's some facts that, what's her name, Linda Mertz, mentioned to me, that they originally, they have 1,000 people on Suresh's system now. And they don't tend to expand that. That's what she says. Originally, the system was designed for 625,000 gallons a day. They've toned that down to 325 a day.
Right.
So hopefully that's going to help. But my feeling was, is that if they're going to do something on that land, they should go before the ZBA first, before they come to us. Because it's a change of use.
Right. If they don't have exemption under...
We need to get, we need to get an...
They actually don't have to go to the ZBA first. They can go to the planning board first, so they can get a site.
Yeah, I know, 674.
Yeah, 674, 44. But they can, the site plan can be approved. Doesn't necessarily need the use is approved, so you don't have to do this.
First, okay, you don't have to come, eventually they will have to.
Well, it depends on what, you know, legal opinion says on the exemption. If they're exempted, then they don't have to go to the zone.
Also, from what I understand, they, they don't want, Gary told me, they don't want to participate in the environmental study of 19 Mile Bay.
Well, they're required to do quite a bit of testing by the DES. So the DES, so the DES is administered by a guy named Mitch Locker. It's the same guy we have to use for all of our groundwater discharge permits, washwater discharge permits at Marina. And he's not a difficult guy to get along with. He's actually, you know, fairly reasonable and thorough. So you could, you know, I'm not sure exactly what they're required to do for testing by DES, you know, but I know that they're required to do testing by DES.
Well, what they're required to do, they're doing.
Okay.
And the testing that we're doing is downstream of all the stuff that they're doing. They have test sites, and they have ongoing testing going on. They have everything that's required from the DES for their permit, okay? So they are doing testing, but the question is...
They can't crank it up.
Right, right, right. And the testing we're doing this year is going to reestablish a baseline 10 years out, okay? Not a lot of stuff has gone through the system. It certainly hasn't come anywhere near where they expect to get to eventually. We'll see how the brook has changed in 10 years.
How does the testing that we're doing differ from the testing the DES is doing? In other words...
Different places.
Different places. They have monitoring wells, and they go down and take samples in certain areas.
They're, they're in the, I believe all the sampling they're doing is in Wolfboro.
It's in Wolfboro. It's in the surrounding area.
Our sampling is on 19 Mile Brook downstream in Tufton Borough.
Wouldn't that have to go through the areas that they're testing? You know, if they're testing...
It goes through the testing area, and then it goes beyond, well, some of it could go below their testing areas, I would assume. If it's soaked into the ground and got lower than getting to the aquifer or whatever, and then came across.
So with our, with our updated baseline this year, we're going to have another snapshot to compare to what we did 10 years ago to see what's the same and what's different. And we're looking at, you know, plants, animals, chemistry, all kinds of different stuff. But I'm not real conversant in it, but it's a pretty comprehensive look at the, at 19 Mile Brook to try and get a sense for where it is today. Now, we believe that that's important because, again, they haven't cranked this thing up. So, once in the next couple of years they start to increase the amount, ongoing monitoring should either notice a difference or a consistency with, you know, what we're seeing now.
I just think it's hard to prove to where it came from.
I, I was just making the same thing. An attorney would cut that.
Maybe it's a horse, if they have flies, flies, you have more flies in your house, now we'll prove that fly came from that horse.
No, no. Yep.
I just look at this, I mean, I deal with DES on a somewhat regular basis. They're, they're pretty thorough. I will, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about the other day is, we don't know a lot about municipal wastewater systems here. You know, we don't deal with them, we don't see them. But it sounds like we're going to be dealing, you know, with looking at this, you know, at least in one way, shape, or form. So the engineer that I deal with a lot at the Marina, and you guys have started dealing with Tyler, you know, for your permitting. I talked to Tyler, and Tyler designed systems like this and is a, used to be a certified wastewater plant operator and such. So I asked him if he'd be interested in coming in and having a class in municipal wastewater systems that we could have for the planning board zoning, uh, planning board conservation committee, as well as the board of selectmen. And basically, this is how they, you know, this is how they work. This is, you know, and he knows all the DES tested, hey, this is the PPMs they're looking for, this CFM rate, and this and that, and what, you know, whatnot. Because if we are going to be looking at this, we should at least have a working knowledge of how these things go. So I think we're aiming for the...
Did you confirm it with him today?
Not yet, but...
So 11, 9?
We are looking at him potentially the 9th.
Tuesday, then 9?
Do that.
Oh, July?
July.
That's a Tuesday. No, a Wednesday.
No.
That's a...
It's a Tuesday, July 9. And we have a meeting on July 11.
Right.
So I hesitate to use the word attendance is mandatory, but it's strongly encouraged because we're going to be looking at this, and we need to understand...
I'll be there.
How these systems work.
Do we have a time yet, or what?
It's, it's 7:00.
Okay.
He's, you know, not interested in being a consultant, a third-party review, or anything like that. This is just an educational. He's a very, he's a good speaker, he's very thorough. I've dealt with him for several years. You know, Jack and Bill have dealt with him to some extent. And he knows the folks at the DES very well. He'd be a great person about things off of, and, you know, understand what all of this is about a little better.
Um, for, I mean, I think that we need that. If we're going to deal with it, we're going to need to know what we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
Man, I think, the biggest concern that I think about, and I think that's a good idea, by the way, is that whatever the designing, does 5.2 acres of Tufton Borough property suffice for what they're doing? I mean, they haven't cranked it up yet, they can't crank it up. Now they're doing something, how do they know? That may be a question for this guy, but how will they know that they're going to fix this problem with addition 5.2 acres and not go further into Tufton Borough, further down?
I will say in talking to Tyler, because I was also, you know, realizing that we're probably going to need some third-party engineering review by people who were extremely knowledgeable about this sort of thing. And so I got a couple of recommendations from different firms, one from Tyler, one from a customer mine who builds these type of systems. And it actually turns out that the firm Wolfboro is using, now designing this expansion, is considered by most people to be the best engineering firm for this type of system in the state, or in the area by far, which is Underwood. So, I, I agree, I just, you know, what is this 5 acres or 3 acres or 2 acres matter? I think the concern here is that the intent, I think everyone's intent is to make sure that, you know, we're not flushing things down into the lake. And we could spend a ton of money and fight about things about this 5 acres, and maybe they can't use it. But they're just going to, they have to do something, and they're going to try to just square, you know, jump a square peg down a round hole, you know, some elaborate thing off to the side or whatnot. And we end up with something, yeah, that 5 acres doesn't get...
Yeah, well, again, my concern, the 5, I don't care about the 5 acres myself, really. The concern would be that they build a system that can, that can satisfy their needs properly and for the future, as the town grows, all right? So...
Well, I think another thing we should do, and I think it's a good idea, having dealt with the gentleman who's in charge of these systems with DES before, I think if we asked Mitch Locker to come in and chat with us, he probably would. And say, hey, these are our concerns, you know? They're the ones who would end up, and, you know, if it's groundwater discharge, they're the ones who enforce it. You know, they're the ones who are guaranteeing that, you know, this is the standard, and this is what we're the union...
Back to your question about the 5 acres. My recollection is that that is area that currently has some breakout in it, so they know they have to fix that. Because all, all of the breakout got to go away.
So. As soon as something becomes a surface water discharge, I mean, you know, works on the surface inside the groundwater, the reason they're freaking out about this, I assume, is because this gets outside of DES's jurisdiction. This goes to the Environmental Protection Agency. And there are, you know, large, you know, the, the ability to sue under the Clean Water Act for surface water discharge is well-used, well-documented, and a well-shredded road by environmental groups and by voters and by everyone else. And it's, it's pretty ugly. So it also, so, you know, my guess is they're gonna be willing to work, I assume, with the town and other people, you know, because, you know, it's a surface water discharge. It's a big deal, you know. It's, it's, I mean, the fine, the fine for a surface water discharge is over thirty-five thousand dollars a day.
So you can make or break a town. You can make or break seven towns on Lake One Passard.
Oh, yeah.
So.
They, they said that the, the system will not be expanded, population, you know. And there, anybody who want, in other words, if a contractor comes in and wants to build a development, they're gonna have to go on septic systems. They won't be able to cook up to the sewer.
Well, the only, yeah, the only part of Wolfburg that's on the sewer is a separate part of the town.
That's correct. Thousand people, a thousand users.
Thousand connections, right.
That's right, thousand connections. That's what Linda Mertz said.
I mean, these are all things that if they're legitimately willing to work with the town, you know, we can put in there and say, and this is what we want. We want it maxed at this amount of, I don't necessarily know it wants to be people, but a certain amount of.
Cookups.
Cubic feet per minute, you know, or whatnot, or flow, or this or that, and this is the concern, and that is the concern. And I mean, above all too, it's just like when somebody does a subdivision or things like that. I mean, they gotta have insurance, you know.
Sure, any bond?
You know.
What did I say, a question?
Yeah, you know, I'm sure they do, but hey, if this goes wrong, because things do go wrong, you know, when you're looking at a huge loss, is this whole suction ground, and this and that, whatever. I mean, last time they were able to sue whoever the original engineering firm wanted to get, you know, and they won. They may not be able to do that this time. So, you know, I mean.
The thing, I guess the one thing that I would be concerned is that, in fact, they have to adhere to our regulations if they're gonna come. Are they gonna be mandated to come before us, or are they gonna be exempt? So I think, I think we need to determine.
Well, I, I think, well, they, they have said they're gonna come to, they're gonna come to the planning board. So, you know, I think that's, that's the first step. Well, I think. And, and.
How they come.
Yeah.
Right.
My sense is that they're just emotional. There isn't money to offer. Well, I think the thing we do is when we get an application, we take the application and we send it to DTC and we say, is this exempt? Well, and we begin the meeting, just like we began with the library, saying, do we think this falls under the exemption of law order? You know, and that's gonna get to the legal minds to figure out.
Did they get a grant to that?
It's, it's not this year.
Yeah, it's not going to be this year. The next year. They said it was all.
It's like a year or two out.
Right, that's exactly what he said, a year or two.
Things working properly up there at the amount of wastewater that's going to that system?
Uh, they, yes, they are, but, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very.
Touchy.
Uh, reduced amount of flow. It's going less than half of what it was originally designed for. So, and one of the things that, uh, they've said they're planning to do is uh, they wanna draw their lagoon down, way, way, way down, so that they can then stop putting it into the RIVs, let the hill dry out, so they can get in and do some of this, uh, collection trenching without water being in the trenches. So if they.
So they're gonna spray again, then?
Uh, there, I think they've been spraying very long.
They have.
But.
Less.
My, yeah, but my understanding is, uh, I, I don't know how they're gonna, but they're, over a period of time, they're gonna purposely draw that lagoon way, way down, so then they can just fill the lagoon up during all this period of time that they're doing the work, uh, without having to, uh, put it up at the top of the hill. So.
Well, it's an issue what to do with all this.
Well, that is, it is. Well, until we get an application. Right now. We, we need to make sure we're educated about the systems and how they work, and what it is. Until we see an application. And I think at, at some point, even before an application, having a conversation with the attorneys about what's out there is not a bad idea. True. All right. That will be very exciting. Yeah. Um, so last up was something, uh, all the talk about easements and things like that, and the town easements got me thinking about easements. And I know this has come up in the past. As you guys know, that town in Tufton Brook owns the center of Cow Island, um, and currently grants easements to island people, kind of owners for septic systems, and grants it onto town property. Um, so, and we do it in nature. I was thinking about that, and I was thinking about fairness and town and devaluation of town assets and stuff like that. And I asked Gary just to come up with some numbers on what does an easement, you know, what is the value of an easement that's granted? Because when the town owns a piece of property, you know, and they take it off the tax rolls, you know, everybody in the town has to pay for that, you know, essentially as part of that, because it's not on the tax rolls. It's not being paid. Um, so I think Gary did some, as you guys know, Gary, Gary sold real estate for, still makes real estate.
What I did is, I looked at, I talked to Jack and got several properties that have easements out there. I took, took a look at, you know, the width of the easement or the size of the easement. You know, it goes out quite a ways, a hundred feet out or beyond the power lines, and, and I said, okay. Um, basically, even though it's an easement, it now comes to the water from property. So I looked at it as highest and best use. Okay, what does it do for the value of that property? It changes the value of that property quite a bit. People buy property out there that doesn't have proper amount of space or, or doesn't perk properly for septic. They go to the town and they get this easement, and next thing you know, the property just goes way up in value. All right, so, and it's nice, but I understand, I think, why you're doing it. It's better for the lake. But if the property itself can get an approval from the state for the septic, that's where it should potentially be. So what I did is, I did a formula, and I calculated how we would, how the land was taxed out there, what the values of each property were. So I took the formula and basically, you know, one guy here came up of taxable land of one seventy-nine, nine, seven, hundred, all right? Um, and, and then I, I divided that out, point three-three acre lot, okay? And I came up with, with a value of, uh, this guy increased his value by nine thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, basically. So.
So as, as long as it gets accept, it gets incorporated in the assessed valuation, then we collect the tax on it.
See, right now, I'm not collecting anything. They're really getting a real free deal here. And I understand why they're doing it.
Well, do, do you know that they're not, that, that, i- if the value of the property goes up, even, even with the septic up on that parcel, okay, then the assessed valuation should go up. Well, there, there's that, but there's also, you know, the town has the asset of that middle of the island, a piece of property, which is an asset that we all own. And every time you put an easement onto that, you devalue.
Increase the value.
The value of that chunk of land is decreased, because that property is now encumbered by the easement, which means that, whatever it is, ten feet by fifty feet can no longer be used for anything other than the septic system for that wall.
But you're making the money on the assessed value of that, or what uses the easement?
If, if, if it, if, if the, if the value of the property goes up, okay, with the septic field on town property, with that value of lot and the house and all that goes up because of that, then that should be reflected in the assessed valuation, and we collect additional taxes from that property. Do we? Well, that, I mean, that's a fair question. You know, and we're, and we're, we're going through the reassessment process this year. And, I mean, I'll, I will ask Rod, uh, how he treats these in his formula.
You see how his, so, you understand, I used it at highest and best, because that's what that property would have, having a septic on it. And I would say, even my numbers, this one at ninety-eight hundred, this guy's at twelve thousand four hundred thirty-four. Here's a guy at thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-six. All right, and these are consistent formulas I did through the process. Another guy at twelve thousand. And those, I would say, are probably very conservative numbers, simply because if I took a look at those properties on the islands, of what they sold on and what they were assessed at, you will find probably quite a difference in what they sell at, assess that. It's typical Tufton Brook. Where you may have it assessed at two, two hundred seventy-five thousand as a property sold for four fifty, four seventy-five. It's easy in waterfronts to see a lot of cases that you're, even from twenty percent to forty percent more when property sold waterfronts. So.
That's right.
These are based upon, um, our assesses' values of the land itself, not a house on the property. I didn't, I took only the land number, okay? And, and did the square footage of that trench going out of four foot trench to a, you know, a twenty by twenty area, whatever it was where I had it here, whatever we discussed, and basically, it's pretty conservative, so, but it, it definitely adds value. Because it's extremely helpful.
No different, no different from, for instance, if you, if you're connected to a municipal sewer as opposed to your own septic system. Generally, municipal sewer puts more value in the property than having a septic. Go ahead. If your neighbor came to you and said, I would like to put a septic on your, you know, over here on this piece of property, you know, he, maybe he's a great friend and you go for it, right? You wouldn't. You know, you would say, all right, if you would like to do that, let's work out a price for the easement that you're gonna need to do that. And, you know, whatever it turned out to be, it's, so I think my point is, is that. You, you, I think you're, I'm guessing your point is that when we grant an easement, we need to charge them for the easement. The value, the devaluation of what you're doing to the property, yes. I, I mean, that's my belief that if, if the town owns this asset out there on the island, and they're gonna grant an easement, you know, you should come up with a price and say, we will grant an easement to you. But, you know, this is the value of an easement on this property. And if the goal is to keep the lake clean, which I think it is for everybody, you know, one of the problems out on, on the islands is that they tend to use outdated septic systems for a long period of time. Give them a grace period where you give it to them for free, say, three years or something like that, and say, hey, we'll grant you an easement for the next three years for free. After that, we're gonna charge for the easement, and the easement is this. And you'll get, you know, the septic system on the island will have a sudden flurry of activity getting replaced, and the lake will be better off. You really give them an outdone, right? You know, the town is better off, because they'll start to generate some income, you know, as, in the future, because there's people who won't do it, you know, and they can't complain, because they have a grace period of however many years it is. And, you know.
And that, that value, that money, or that amount that they paid for that easement, should be reflected on the assessment then?
Well, I mean, that's up to whoever assesses the property, but, you know.
I mean, is it a one-time?
But, but I, but I think that, uh, and, and I will try and remember to ask Rod how, how he figures that into his formula, because if it, if it increases the value of the property, then it should increase the assessed valuation. And of course, he uses a formula, uh, has all kinds of different pieces that goes into it. I, I'm gonna answer that question about.
Yeah, his one would probably be quite a bit different.
I have a question. Does anybody have a private septic on their property?
What's that?
In Cow, at Cow Island, or they all?
They're all private septic.
I know that, but that's the easement, is it?
Oh, there's a lot of them. There, there's, these easements will happen. I don't know, what do you do?
There's probably five of them out there.
Okay, that's it?
I think I did. But it's. If, if you look at the, if you look at the lot sizes all around Cow Island, they're not consistent, okay? Some have more, and, and the soils on those lots.
There's an island side of five acre lots, and the other's a half acre lots.
Right, right. And, you know, if you're on a lot that has the Rockies all get out, that's what. You're not gonna be a good per, protest on that to, on the septic. Uh, so I, I see some merit in your.
How many lots on Cow Island?
Oh, three hundred.
Three hundred? And we're talking about five easements?
Right now, yeah.
But I think your comment about giving three years makes other people step up, because there's so much outdated stuff out on the islands. It's everywhere.
I mean, it's probably the single biggest source of, of anything is, you know, it's, it's ten times harder to do a septic on an island than it is.
And it's much more expensive, too.
Yeah. But there's, there's a lot of, a lot of shorefront property that have bad septic systems too, not, not just any islands.
I agree.
I think this is part of the bigger picture, is that we have, you know, we have to look at, you know, the, the town lands and things as an asset, and we have to realize that when we do an easement on something, we devalue the asset. And it has to be offset by something, you know.
Hopefully, they.
Well, prior to sixty-seven, no one had to get a permit to put a septic system. There's no records of that. And there's a law, the property, we're not allowed that.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's a lot of old wooden barrels out there.
That's right.
Well, and again, we've updated our zoning, our regulations, so that if you have a failed existing system and you want to replace it, you don't have to go to ZBA and get a variance to put, to replace a bad system in the same area with a new system. The way that ordinance is written for, you gotta go to ZBA because it's in the lakefront zone, and it's like.
Only if it was in the wetlands.
Hmm?
Only if it was in the wetlands.
Right.
Or within the wetlands.
So who's gonna determine how much it costs then?
How much what costs?
How much the easement is gonna, how much you're gonna.
This is just.
Yeah, this, this, this is a, yeah. This I see as a study that will be followed by a proposal from the planning board to the selectmen as a direction to go. Uh, I, I don't know what the cost is. Uh, and, and it's, uh, it, it is in the best interest of all of us to have good septic systems on all the properties. And, you know, with, with respect to using the center of Cow Island, uh, and, and the value of the center of Cow Island, I don't, somebody told me once how.
I had a number value.
Yes, right, right. Somebody, somebody told me once how we got it, and I'd forgotten. But at any rate, there's a reason that, uh, that resides with who it does in terms of, you know, what would it be used for otherwise. And I, I, I see some merit in your suggestion that using a fee for an easement, particularly on a deferred basis as a way to encourage people with bad systems to step up now as opposed to ten, fifteen years down the line, could make some sense. But as Chad said, we have a handful, uh, now, um, and.
You know, it affects two-thirds of the island. The other three of the island is, the center is known by the town, so.
Right.
Done by Iowa associations.
Now, some people come out and can't get access to the town property. If you can, I can. Why does, why do we keep the, the property? Why don't we just sell it? Well, uh, I, I don't, I don't know. Uh, I mean, one reason we don't sell it is that there hasn't been, I don't know that there's any, been any, uh, real focus put into, you know, getting rid of it. I don't know how we ended up with it. I don't know if there was a, if there was a restriction on the deed code of the town. It was taken for back taxes. Uh, I don't believe so. I could be wrong, but, no, I think the, the last of the tax-dead properties, uh, the exceptional one we took this year are going on auction this Saturday. I don't mind, I don't have any objection to keeping it, but, I mean, we should use it as a resource and develop it as a resource. I mean, in, you know, whether it's hiking trails or.
Yeah, how big is it?
Hundred acres.
Hundred acres? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's a beach at one end, isn't there?
Yeah, there's two.
Very nice, too.
Yeah.
There's two legal rightaways to get to it from the water. One's through the beach, and the other one's through a different point.
You should sell it.
We should either do something with it, or we should send it down the road and back on the tax rolls. Well, there is, there is a plan and initiative to develop trails.
We had the beach survey in the right, because the rightaway that gets to the center of the island from the beach crosses someone else's property. And it's a rightaway, and that was flagged by a surveyor. And it's a right of way and that was flagged by a surveyor two years ago. So that is marked, so there is access to get to it. And the other place to access it's actually, it's where the, uh, power lines come along. There's a power line easement and the town has an access here as well.
Yep. From Little Bear over?
Yeah, to the island.
That sounds like a beautiful piece of property.
It is true, it's beautiful, if you watch it, if you watch it, it's a great piece of property.
Very nice.
All right.
Well-
So we know we have a group that's interested in trail building. This year they're focused into doing the trails on the Great Meadow. And rather than trying to fracture efforts into multi-mineral areas and let's do some work and then we'll move over to another area. We have other parcels that we own in town that should be more accessible for use as well. Just a matter of putting the effort and getting it done.
The Great Meadow sounds like a real nice project though. It's really a nice area down there. It's, you could spend a day down there and I could work.
All right, is anybody got anything else? All right, uh, public comments, do you have any? Anything else?
Seth, thank you.
Hey, motion for adjournment?
We got it.
Are those in favor?